Good evening. We will call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, consent items, draft meeting minutes for November 25th and draft meeting minutes for August 11th will be pushed to the second October meeting. And when we will likely have quorum, we don't have quorum for either of those two meetings tonight. Citizen input on non-agenda items, this is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Non-Agenda Items. Do we have any members of the public trying to, okay, so we can just move right along? There's no old business, no new business, no public hearings this evening, which takes us to the Planning Commission's work session to discuss comprehensive plan policies presented by Steve Faust from 3J Consulting and Don Hardy from the Planning Department or Planning Director. Do you guys want to go ahead and take it away? I don't have the preamble for the work session, is that okay?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Good evening Chair Ellison and Planning Commissioners. We will be going through the comprehensive plan draft policies tonight and we would like your input on these, this is important as we continue in the comprehensive plan update process. Steve Faust will be giving an overview of what we've done to date on the comprehensive plan. Just to let you know, we still have a bit of time to go through this. It's going to go to the City Council for work session. We're also carving out some time for both the Project Advisory Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee to continue to provide input in particular the Transportation System Plan, which is concurrently being run with the comprehensive plan. So the anticipated hearings for City Council would be early next year, February and March. February for the comprehensive plan is anticipated and March for the Transportation System Plan. We're not really focusing on the Transportation System Plan tonight even though the packets had Transportation System Plan information in it. There will be an opportunity to dive deep into the Transportation System Plan in a work session on December 22nd. That's our anticipated work session for that item. So tonight is on the comprehensive plan and in particular if you all have input on what we've done to date. This is an ongoing discussion process. As Steve gets into this a bit more, I'm going to speak a bit to some of the recognition of issues dealing with Historic Landmarks Commission and Historic Preservation Plan and how we're weaving that into the comprehensive plan as part of that document and basically why we're doing that. But as we're going through this process for the comprehensive plan update, we're recognizing that some things like that item there are having to be woven in. That's taken a bit of extra time. Initially, we were hoping to be all wrapped up by the end of the year, but we would like to take the adequate time to do this correctly so we have all input. So your input tonight is important to us and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve.
Thank you, Don. Good evening Chair Ellison and Commissioners. Thank you for having me here tonight. Tonight, what I am going to do as part of the presentation is first start with an overview just to remind all of us of what a comprehensive plan is and what it tries to achieve. I know both with our Project Advisory Committee and with the broader public, we've had questions about that, so I want to try to provide some, an overview of the comprehensive plan itself. I'm going to touch briefly on some community engagement that we did around the draft, goals, policies and strategies, and then talk about what changes we have enacted since that community engagement. So while you have the full set of goals, policies and strategies in your packets, we're going to focus on those that we've been, that we've modified in response to either community engagement or other conversations that have been had. So starting, just a refresher on our process. So we started the comprehensive plan, Transportation System Plan and Urban Growth Boundary Expansion work way back in January of 2023. We quick, we pretty early on worked on background reports for the different elements of the comprehensive plan and worked on the community vision. Then you'll see, it looks like we've been working on goals, policies and strategies for a very long time, but we kind of took a pause on the comprehensive plan while we were focused a little more on urban growth boundary expansion and the Transportation System Plan and more recently picked up the comprehensive plan again. So there have been six Project Advisory Committee meetings, five summits, one Spanish language summit, a number of briefings and we've also had meetings of our Technical Advisory Committee over that time. So while not all of those meetings focused specifically on the comprehensive plan, many of them did and we've received a lot of feedback through that process. So what is a comprehensive plan? It is a long-range plan that guides future growth and development in the Canby urban area. It establishes a framework to guide all land use and related activities in line with the community's vision and aims to ensure orderly and efficient development that meets the community's needs. Specifically, the comprehensive plan includes goals, policies, a comprehensive plan map and other components that inform how and where land is developed and infrastructure is provided to meet the needs of current residents. So as I mentioned, we started with background report or inventories. These are required to provide a factual basis for the policies and strategies that are in the comprehensive plan. Typically, we might update the original comprehensive plan inventory. We don't have that for Canby, but we do have a number of these inventories, so I'll go through those real quickly. So for Goal Five, which is natural resources, scenic and historic areas and open spaces, there is no existing Goal Five inventory, but we do have maps and information on natural and historic resources. There's also probably not a topic for tonight, but a plan that Don's looking at obtaining funding for a local wetland inventory, which will help to delineate or, you know, identify and define some of those wetland resources. There is, for Goal Seven, natural hazards, there is a county natural hazard mitigation plan and a specific addendum to that plan that is specific to Canby. As you know, you have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, an Approved Economic Opportunities Analysis, an Approved Housing Needs Analysis, utility master plans, water sewer for Goal 11 and then a Transportation System Plan for Goal 12. So a lot of the factual basis that we use in order to make, to create or modify goals and policies are in place. I mentioned as well that we also did our early work on the community vision. I didn't put the entire vision here, I think you've seen it before, excuse me. And I know it was brought to City Council, so the main themes of that vision are housing for all, supportive and welcoming community, diverse and prosperous economy, resilient public infrastructure and network of connected green spaces. And those all have like paragraph descriptions of them in the community vision. How do we get there? Goals and policies, that's what we're going to be talking about today. And then action plans, how do we make it happen? And this is what caused some confusion, I think, with our PAC and maybe with the public is that folks were looking at the comprehensive plan and wanted very, if people are familiar with SMART goals, things that are measurable and actionable and have a timeline. The way the comprehensive plan works is it provides the policy direction. So high-level policy direction and then that policy direction is implemented not through the comprehensive plan, but through other tools like the Development Code, zoning maps, annexation procedures, capital improvement program for improvements and other plans and programs. So again, the comprehensive plan provides the policy direction and then it is then implemented through these other tools. And then our comprehensive plan essentially consists of those different elements that I described in one document. I'm trying to see, okay. Moving on to the community engagement that we did recently, we had both PAC meeting number six and our community summit number six. Briefly from our PAC, we heard a few things. One, we'll get to some changes in the comprehensive plan map. They asked for some clearer, larger maps for the comprehensive plan map changes and for the TSP. And then regarding the comprehensive plan itself, a few high-level takeaways. They wanted to see strategies for outreach to the Spanish-speaking community. They talked a lot about the tension between land efficiency and increased density, increasing densities with kind of quality of life, making sure there's enough parks and green space, making sure that the areas where we see increased density are in the city core, the downtown core and maybe along transportation corridors. So that was a conversation they had, kind of touched on several times. For Goal Five, folks wanted to see something about maintaining Canby's visual character. Regarding recreation, there was talk of, and you'll see this theme several times in our proposed changes. They want to just make sure that, again, parks and open spaces are provided. If there's going to be increases in density and multifamily development, they want to make sure there's green space as well. And then regarding transportation, they wanted to see some better alignment between the zoning and the comprehensive plan. We also, I'm sorry, it's community summit number five. There's been six total summits, one of them was the Spanish language summit. That was held August 19th at Ackerman. We presented feedback on the draft elements of the comprehensive plan and the Transportation System Plan. We had 32 community members participate in person and then we had an online questionnaire open for about a month from mid-August to mid-September and received 21 responses. Some of the themes that we heard through both of the in-person and online open house, a need for buffer zones between incompatible land uses. A lot of people were concerned about noise from industrial uses conflicting with residential uses. You'll see that in our proposed changes. Concern about infrastructure and specifically the electrical grid keeping up with growth. Some people really wanted to see incentives for solar panel installation, especially on larger industrial buildings. And a need for restrooms in parks and a desire for larger parks in Canby. Continuing the themes, concern about growth and maintaining Canby's small-town feel. People wanted, some people, I should say, these are, none of these are unanimous. They're themes that stood out to us from those 50-some people. Some people wanted to prioritize attracting visitors and tourism over new residents and emphasizing heritage tourism. Increasing support for businesses with a focus on commercial uses specifically. Revitalizing downtown Canby and there were several calls for programs for business owners to improve their facades. Concern about the availability of parking, especially as, you know, through state regulations, the requirements for minimum parking change over time. So they want to make sure there's enough parking. People talked a lot about increasing walkability and filling any gaps in the sidewalk network. Some calls for supporting low and moderate income housing and increased mixed-use opportunities, especially in the urban core. Again, the need for a green space requirement with multifamily developments. Several comments about preserving the tree canopy, especially related to new development and street trees. Several people asked for better swimming access or water, river access for recreation. The idea that Canby should look into having a Parks Department and/or Director. And then a desire for intentional growth. So those are some of the themes that we heard, again, in your packets. You have the full kind of complement of, or compilation of comments that we received, so you can take a look at those and see kind of what specifically came out of that. This is just our attempt at summarizing that information. So first, the comprehensive plan map. There's a few proposed changes to the comprehensive plan map, specifically around Area J and then a few other scattered sites. For Area J, looking at changing some medium-density residential to low-density residential and then some low-density residential to highway commercial. And then the mixed-use area, I'm sorry, getting a little torn about, but you can see some of the changes from lower density to medium density in Area J and adjacent to Area J. And then some of the other ones were really just changing the zoning to match the current uses. So there were a couple parcels that were changed from, I think, residential to highway commercial.
And just a bit more on, so largely most of the changes here are to reflect the existing land use on the sites. So there's consistency between the zoning and the comprehensive plan. Back to the special Area J, which is out by Jarbo's Restaurant. The current comprehensive plan speaks very specifically to the desired mix for a mix of uses out there for medium-density and high-density residential. It actually calls out how much acreage there should be in that area. So that's reflective of that as well in terms of a theme out there. The Jarbo's Restaurant out there is actually not pre-designated as commercial. So that was another thing that we felt was appropriate to have commercial designation, comprehensive plan designation on property currently is residential designation, pre-designation. This goes back to our 1984 comprehensive plan, which is, you know, 40 years ago. So at that time, that was not identified as that. This is setting the stage for being consistent with the current comprehensive plan that articulates what that area should be. Walnut Street is also going to be going through that area, the extension.
Thanks, Don. All right.
Hold on. Commissioner Ewart?
I'm sorry, I can't really see this little map, it's too small. On the screen here behind me on Ivy Street, what is the change that's happening there?
So there is a commercial business that's there and it's reflecting that would be a comprehensive plan designation of commercial. It's currently designated as, comprehensive plan designated as residential.
Okay, and the one, talk to me about the one next to up here.
That's, oh, that one up there, okay. That one, and it is really difficult to see, my apologies. That is a, the planning pattern that is, that's there, that's existing, the subdivision planning pattern that comprehensive plan designation that's proposed is reflective of that current development. It's fully developed and it's a matter of, and I can't quite see what the designation is and...
Don, it's a change from, I'm trying to see here, from medium-density residential to low-density residential. For just, just on the western edge of that dark, that kind of darker yellow. If you go to the new, the proposed, it's a lighter yellow, so that's a change from medium-density residential to low-density residential.
And so those are reflective of the current development that's there. This comprehensive plan designation, it's a cleanup basically. I mean, if we left it the same as it is now, it would make no material difference because it's fully built out, yeah.
Talk to me about what we're doing at Knightsbridge.
Knightsbridge, again, looking at...
I think that's another existing use change.
Yeah, it's, I think it was basically a designation to realize that that property there is consistent with...
Which property are we talking about?
I think it's, I can't quite see the...
The circles might have got moved a little bit, it's a triangular shaped. And maybe it went from medium to low-density residential as well?
I think that's exactly right, that that was reflective of that, what was on that property and what's surrounding it.
Okay.
And so it doesn't change the underlying base zone. So the base zone has not changed here at all. This is just the comprehensive plan designation of the property, just trying to make it consistent with what's underlying it. It's a bit weird, I understand, it's more of, we have a chance here to clean this up and it's really a matter of, we're not changing anyone's zoning on this property. Comprehensive plan is just a designation on the property itself, not the zoning.
Okay, I couldn't read that.
I'm sorry, this, these things are, we should probably have a bigger map, my apologies.
All right.
Hey, Don, I'm just checking on the line. Quick question for you on the Ivy Street section. So I see that it got colored to highly commercial. Why is it highly commercial and not residential commercial, like the brown?
Great question. I mean, it's, our belief is that's reflective of the uses that are already on that site and that not restricting the commercial activities to something that would be less, would be more restrictive there. It is, it does have more of a highway commercial than a, than a commercial residential use designation and that's a pretty restrictive zone. And we can...
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and we can dive into more detail on that if you'd like, but that's the main answer. It's actually a warehouse, it looks like a warehouse kind of commercial business activity. I don't know the exact businesses that are in there, it's, but it looks fairly high-intensity on the air photos. Storage, storage yard, okay, storage, yeah.
Hey, Don.
Yeah.
So where the oranges up there by the green up on top there?
Which side?
The orange at the top and the green at the center.
Is this all existing?
That is all, that's all existing, that's up off of territorial. So you've got apartments up there that are already built in that area, that is not changing.
So what's the difference between the current and the proposed pictures here?
So the circles are, they're very small, really, I mean, there's not a whole lot here. So really mainly it's to change the designation. We talked about the commercial piece that Commissioner just spoke to and the other ones are really a change between low or medium-density and low-density residential. And the only really significant changes would be out by Jarbo's Restaurant. That's a recast of what was pre-designated out there. Largely, the mix of medium and low-density is the same. There, the Jarbo's Restaurant has, and Lion's property, south of that is the Lion's property. That's where essentially Walnut Street Extension is going to go through. That's designated on the comprehensive plan proposed as commercial, highway commercial. There's also a multifamily, higher-density property that's off of Heinz there that's shown as well. Again, this is reflective of the comprehensive plan currently as to what the mix should be in that area.
So this has nothing to do with the extension of the, of the growth boundary eventually?
Not, no, not at all. In fact, we're not, we're not there yet. But that conversation, great question, we'll be, we'll be starting that back up next year, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move to the goals and policies, really more on the policies and strategies. We're not really looking at changing the goals as much, but I did want to say that it's a lot. There's a lot more in your packets, we tried to find a way to kind of focus for you tonight, but it's still a lot, so bear with me as I work through these. The changes were kind of, I think, maybe four main things in nature. Some of them are just simply kind of language cleanups to try to make the policies or strategies more concise or efficient language, yes.
Question, before we dive into this, is this something that we are, you're wanting us to have input on? Or are we going to vote on this so that you can send it to the council? What do you want of us tonight?
I think the general direction here, we're really not necessarily asking you for a vote and I'm not sure if there would be, I don't think we'd have enough time necessarily go through that. You will have a full opportunity in a hearing for that discussion, but tonight, are we on the right, are we generally on the right track here? And if there's differences of opinion, we'll pick that up and put that together for the Planning Commission hearing. And this will also be reflective, once we get to the Planning Commission hearing, we'll reflect that to the council and the council won't see that until they have their own work session and their own hearing for that. So tonight, it's, these are large, broad-brush thematic scale items versus a vote for each individual one. Otherwise, we're going to be here till like midnight. And I don't, I think we're still in the process of adjusting these. You got coffee?
And, Don, I would, I would add that, that again, we're focused on things that have changed over the past few months. I would encourage you to look at the full packet. Over time, we'll be sending out a revised packet before your hearing, but it's a lot and it takes a long time to go through, so now is a good time to start on your own, kind of going through the goals, policies. your own, kind of going through the goals, policies, strategies beyond what we're presenting tonight, so that when the hearing comes around, or even before, if you have concerns, you can reach out to Don with those.
So what we've got in our packet is not a full packet?
It is a full, it is all the goals, policies, and strategies in your packet, but there might be more revisions made before your hearing, based on what we hear tonight. Go ahead, Don.
I'm sorry, what you're reflecting here is, so to that question, Stephen, confirm this, please, that what they're seeing is portions of this that we went through and made changes to, but that's also reflective in their packet as well?
Correct.
Okay, so what you're seeing here is the parts that we've changed, the idea behind this is we, we're taking input and we're making adjustments as we go. And part of this is your input, the community summit input, the project advisory team input, Historic Landmarks Commission has provided quite a bit of substantive input, and I'm going to go into that in a minute here. And so all this stuff starts to then be track changes for what we're doing. And so if you, if we heard from you all tonight, and you all generally agreed, we could make other changes as well, and that would be part of this discussion.
But like you said, Don, while the full packet with these changes, or the full package with the, with the changes are in your packets, the PowerPoint tonight focuses just on things that we've been changing recently. Things to make language more efficient, things in response to what we heard from the community, both our PAC and at the summit. Don's, in a little bit, is going to talk a little bit about historic preservation, and then there's some new state guidance around, kind of related to the, the historic pieces, but cultural preservation and working with tribes. So those, those are kind of the main categories. So some of the little cleanups, I might go by more quickly, and I'll spend some more times on, time on what I think are the more substantive pieces. For instance, under the goal for citizen involvement, this first strategy is really just a language cleanup, no significant change there. Strategy 1.2 talks about encouraging participation amongst, if you remember, there was a call from the PAC to have strategies for reaching out to the Spanish-speaking community. We added some other underserved populations that we want to make sure are receiving materials in an accessible way. Continuing on with goal one, again, strategy 3.1 is just some minor cleanup. Same with 3.3. 3.4, we were asked to add some language about working with homeowners, homeowners associations, excuse me, as that, that they are common and can be when doing community engagement. And then finally, some folks asked for the city to be providing more information about city events and initiatives and community events, so we added some language there. Goal two is land use planning. Strategy 1.2, we added some additional language in response. If you recall, we heard from the community about conflicting industrial and residential uses, so we added the piece at the end about additional screening and sound mitigation to address concerns about noise. 1.5, and this is the first, Don, and this one is in land use planning. We'll see a lot more of the historic preservation pieces in goal five, but maybe now is a good time for you to talk about kind of what's been happening in recent months there.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so we have, there's an adopted historic preservation plan that was adopted in 2020. We recognize that that adopted historic preservation plan, it was a robust effort, and that historic preservation plan not only adopted historic preservation plan policies, it also adopted 1984 comprehensive plan policies. So to reconcile the fact that we're now moving forward to a 2025, 2026 comprehensive plan update, we discussed this with our legal counsel, and they felt the best thing to do would be to recognize policies, goals, policies, and strategies for a historic preservation plan in the adopted comprehensive plan, but to reflect that, there's been adjustments to those, those, in some cases, adjustments to those policies and goals and strategies. And we're working with the chair and vice chair of the Historic Landmarks Commission, closely with them on these items to pull them forward and to, with their assistance, obviously, adjust those as needed to then put them into our comprehensive plan to reflect them as the driving comprehensive plan goals, policies, and strategies. That's easier to do than going back and redoing the historic preservation plan, which was a monumental effort. So, so what we'll have is, we'll have the chapter intro of that section of chapter five, which is the goal five chapter, and we'll talk about those are now reflecting of the, the goals, policies, and strategies now being reflected forward. The historic preservation plan goals, policies are going to be reflected in the comp plan. This is going to make that chapter fairly substantial compared to the other chapters, but it was the easiest path forward, we felt, and also to recognize that these are now by, these are going to be by ordinance adopted, and basically what the goals, policies, and strategies will be going forward. We cannot have internally inconsistent goals, policies, and strategies from 1984 in another document that's been adopted previously without reconciling this issue. So not only do the chapters have to be internally consistent, they have to be consistent amongst, amongst each other. And so in 1984, 40 years ago, you can imagine there probably would be some things that changed over that 40-year period, and what we said as goals, policies, and strategies back in 1984 are not reflective of today. So hopefully, that helps in the description and was not confusing, but, so you're going to see goals, policies, and strategies in, in a number of the chapters that are kind of sprinkled. Most of them are going to be in chapter five, but some of these historic preservation plan policies that are being put into our comp plan for adoption are in other chapters as well.
Okay. Thanks, Don. So this 1.5 is really saying to ensure that development is, is consistent with these different zones, and that there's a process for identifying potential conflicts between land development and the preservation of historic resources.
And I just wanted to say, we're still working on some of these as well, so these may come back in slightly different form to you all, so there may still be a few of these that we come back and, and, and you'll see them in, in the hearing process, and we'll note those if they are changed further. So there's still some ongoing conversation.
3.3 is in response, again, to concerns about infrastructure keeping up with development, so there's a policy about meeting transportation levels of service with new land use approvals. And then 4.2 is ensuring that the comprehensive plan map and, and zoning are, are consistent, basically, as, as changes happen to the, to, at the comprehensive plan level, that there are associated changes made in the CANBE code, subsequent CANBE code updates. So if you, if, I think you might know that there's a intention to follow this comprehensive plan update with an update to the city's code, so making sure those two are consistent. And now is where we get to chapter five, where there are a lot of historic preservation pieces. Policy number one added, you know, I, I probably am not going to go through all the language for each of these, but cemeteries was added to, to policy number one, and just talking about strengthening CANBE's identity through an engaged community and well-informed public policy. Again, these are brought forth from that historic preservation plan.
Are we on a different slide?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yep.
There we go. That was policy number one. Strategy 1.2 talks about discouraging demolitions or partial demolitions of historic resources or properties. 1.3 talks about the continued evaluation, so tracking of potentially eligible historic 1.5, fostering a public understanding of historic preservation and its community benefit. 1.6 implementing, well, 1.6 and 1.7 both refer to specific chapters or, or sections of that historic preservation plan, wasn't, one is an inventory, and then one talks about heritage areas from that plan. 1.8 talks about working with, talks more about cultural resources and recognizing the importance of different populations like Native Americans, immigrants, workers, and women. 1.9 specifically talks about looking at historic cemeteries and building on the work that's been done around historic cemeteries. And Don, there's at least one, right, historic cemetery?
Yes, there, there is, and, and I think that's reflective of that, yeah.
Okay. Policy two, there was just addition of the word and enhance in terms of the visual character of CANBE. Again, we, we heard about the concern about the visual character of CANBE from the community. Policy number five, so in addition to historic resources, we also, and, and cultural resources, this goal also touches on natural resources and open spaces. And someone noticed that policy number five talked about wetlands and riparian areas, but they asked if there could be a specific reference to endangered species, so that was added. I talked about the public's, some of members of the public's concern about trees. We have 6.1 exploring the development of a CANBE tree ordinance, or a tree preservation ordinance. 6.2 talks about retaining historic trees and landscapes. All right. Policy number seven, so the next number of, of, the policy and these strategies are very specific procedural instructions about how you deal with archaeological resources. I'm not going to go through them all, but if you have any questions, Don, Don or I might be able to answer those, but it's specifically working with the state historic preservation office and tribes to make sure that cultural or archaeological resources are not disturbed. That takes us all the way...
I've got a question on this.
Yep.
Number one, what you're reading here tonight does not look anything like the package that I was sent in the mail. My, my notes and the pages aren't lining up at all. And so either I'm losing my marbles or something, but it, it, it doesn't jive. So I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time following what you're, what you're reading here, what you're putting out. You're covering a lot of information really, really quick. Number two, this goal number five, when you say that we are, this was that whole thing that was in green that we are inserting into our code?
Into the comprehensive plan.
Why?
So we have a historic preservation plan that's been adopted, and that has a 1984, it references back to the 1984 comprehensive plan.
Okay, so I remember adopting the historic thing. We talked about that. We, we, we did that. But then, now we're going, we've got the whole tribal governments thing that are putting their fingers into the mix here, and...
A lot of this is already adopted in the historic preservation plan now. It currently is, and we're just moving it over. Some of it is being changed slightly, and, so did you have concerns about anything specific of, I mean, yeah.
Who's, who's the SHPO? I guess I'll ask that question.
Oregon.
State Historic Preservation Office.
Okay. And anyway, this, this was, this was really, really confusing. I'm not exactly sure why we're having to add this all to our, our comprehensive plan.
And so, like, we can't have a document that, like, is, this is to reconcile the fact that you either have to redo, we have to either redo the entire historic preservation plan, which is a huge amount of work, and it was a grant-supported document, or we have to reflect that in our comp plan that's being updated now. And I know it seems like we're now into, like, the weeds, and maybe what would be helpful is for us to give more background on items that may be, you know, technical terms, et cetera, for you all. Essentially, this is already largely in the body of the historic preservation plan, and we're, we're moving that forward. And, and in terms of, like, where the state is going, maybe this in context as well, I also feel it's, it's consistent with that. There's rulemaking going on right now on tribes as well, and it's completely consistent with that, meaning that as part of land use development reviews in the future, tribes will have the ability to comment on those, et cetera. I don't think there's any, anything inconsistent with where that is going on terms of, in terms of a policy. Now, so this...
So I guess, I guess, you know, we try, we, this whole process, we're, we're trying to do affordable housing, we're trying to make our community a better place to live, and so on and so forth, and I'm seeing a whole section that we're adding to the comp plan that is, it, it, it's all red tape. It's all red tape. And it, it doesn't make CANBE a better place to live. It, it doesn't, it, it, it's going to make it harder and harder and harder for us to move forward as a community. And I just, I guess my question is, the bottom line, is do we have to have this? Do we have to have this? Is this something that the state is forcing down our throat?
It's more about, we, we either have to, I mean, maybe I'm going to, I'm going to answer your question, but bear with me. So we, we have a historic preservation plan, most of this is coming from that, and, but the problem is, there's also a bunch of policies in that historic preservation plan that are obsolete, and we have to make them current. So the answer is, we need this to be the driving, to reflect correctly what that should say in modern terms as goals, policies, and strategies. It's probably more of a legal item that we're responsible for, because we cannot have an internally inconsistent document out there, which is the historic preservation plan, and not how, somehow reconcile that in our comprehensive plan. And it seems like a lot, I know it seems like a ton of information, because the other chapters are not as thick, but this is, this is one of the challenges of, like, discovery, going through this process and trying to clean it up, and, you know, if there's ones that cause significant concern, we're happy to go back and describe what those really mean, et cetera. Yeah.
Well, I, and I hear what you're saying, okay, but, you know, we had, as far as I was concerned, several years ago, we went through the whole historic plan that we did for our, our, our community. Judy was a great part of it, her and her crew, they put together a, a, a great plan, I thought, and, you know, it was sound, it was good for our community, and we, we, we put it together, and we had it. And I got to say that this thing in section goal number five doesn't look anything like what we put together. And so I'm, I was very happy with what we had, and this, I'm, I'm, this, there's a whole bunch of pork in this that I don't think CANBE needs. I just, and I'll just leave it at that. I mean, I'm just going to go on record.
Sure.
I'm just going to say that, because I personally, if we don't need this, I would rather not see it. But if, if this is what we're going to move forward with, and I don't know what the rest of commissioners feel about it, but I went through and I read this word for word, and I'm perfectly happy with what we had in place. And this whole thing, it, it, it doesn't make any, it just doesn't make any sense to me at all.
So what happens, Don, if it's not in there? I mean, I, I'm not understanding this either.
Well, I, there, part of it is, we, there'll, there would be, if we didn't do anything and just didn't, essentially, we need to recognize this at, at some level. And so typically, what you would do is you'd either, A, adopt by reference the entire historic preservation plan, which is obsolete in parts for goals, policies, and strategies, which reflect things that are not true about CANBE now, which were true 40 years ago, but are not reflective of... not reflective of what Canby is today. I mean, in terms of like where we've, where we've become a middle, we're a middle-sized city, we were a small city back in the day in 84.
I guess, it seems like we're planning to put a Band-Aid on this, and I agree with Commissioner Ewood, it's, we're going to add a lot of fat to this. It seems like we need to go back to the historic plan.
Well, and part of that is.
This is getting muddy.
And would it, one question I have is, reducing the content, would that make a difference in your?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, okay, and I mean, that's.
I'd be curious as to what Judy's opinion is.
I would like to hear that as well.
On goal number five. I really would.
So maybe we have a bit more reduction.
Yeah, she's the expert.
Simmer this down.
I just don't, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not an expert on it, but I got to tell you, this is getting a long ways away from what we put together, or what she put together, her group.
I'll comment if you want.
Yes, please.
Okay, and thank you for the nice comments, Dan. It was a lot of work. And it's funny, I just went back and looked at that document, and its intent always was there, it's an entire section of that historic preservation plan that said, this is going to go in the comprehensive plan, word for word, and I see a lot of those in here, word for word. Now, what wasn't intended, what there was, there was going to be a five-year gap between the historic preservation plan, the, and nobody's fault, you know, life happens, urban growth boundary happens, you know, all these things happen. And so I think that's put us in a bit of a conundrum. The other thing is, I agree, we don't want pork, we don't want a bunch of bureaucracy and red tape. When I go back and look at this or these words, you're right, it's probably too many words, it's very, you know, it's not very user-friendly, it could really be cleaned up. However, most of what's in here, in fact, I can't think of anything that's in here that isn't already a requirement, like SHPO, we already do as a city, we do what we need to do with SHPO. Like when we were working on the city hall things, we were very in touch with SHPO. So the HLC knows how to do all that, the planning department, they've been through that. That's nothing new, and we're already doing it. Or other things like there are state rules and regulations, working with tribal governments, that's not new either. It's just putting in words to remind us, that's all, but it's not new. So I agree with you that we should wordsmith this to make it not so onerous sounding, but it was always the intent to put these in the comprehensive plan. And it even says that in the historic preservation plan that we adopted. I know that doesn't make any sense, but the bottom line is, we're mostly doing all this already, and if it's not something we've encountered yet, we will, and there are state rules that we don't want to find ourselves out of compliance with, that's all.
I think the boiling down piece, the message was received, and that would be the part that we will work on to boil down. And I, you know, it, this was a surprise a bit to us, I mean, this predates me, and I'm not like, you know, casting any stones here at all, but like, I, you know, I like looked at this and like, we can't let this stand because like, you cannot have a brand-new comp plan where the chapters are internally inconsistent with each other and have data and information that in no, no fault to the historic preservation plan, the consultant went crazy in terms of putting all the information in that he possibly could. And that included like chapters on land use and stuff in goal five, which, you know, went beyond probably the scope, got a really good deal with the consultant because they literally put everything in there that was in the current, the comp plan from 84. So it's not just five years ago, it's, you know, reflective of something that was yesteryear. And that's my conundrum. So we're trying to find the middle ground here of like, without overdoing it, and Steve and I have actually had conversations about the content here, and it's challenging. But we will, we have another meeting with the chair and vice chair, the HLC, coming up in a few days. We'll start boiling this down, and that'll be the directive here.
I have one other, maybe it's a question, Don, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
You know, I know that we just looked at the map of the comprehensive plan, it's inside the growth boundary, and a lot of what we were talking about with the heritage plan is in and out. So if I think of a lot of heritage areas or cemeteries, a lot of those are not within the map for the comprehensive plan. So that's just something to keep in mind. Things could be adjusted based on that.
And recognizing that, I mean, the, a lot of the resource information is from the county, from on goal five on, and that's another piece that we're, that we're recognizing as well. Yeah, that you're, you're right, some of it's inside the boundary, some of it's outside the boundary, and then some of this is even going to get revisited, Commissioner Jeroch, when we do the urban growth boundary, and then we have to come back and re-adopt the comprehensive plan yet again. That'll be another layer later on as well. So with that.
Hey, I've got a quick.
Yes, Jenny, please.
Yeah, hi. So sorry, guys, I'm out of town, and apparently I didn't pack my charge cord for my laptop, and it just went out. So I'll just be on the phone for the rest of the meeting. I just want to say the slide prior, the one that calls out trying to preserve trees and incorporate them into new plans as much as possible, I really appreciated seeing that, and I would like to keep that because I think it would be important for us to recognize formally the value of some of the existing green that makes sense, whatever constraints are reasonable.
So noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm going to move us to goal six, because the rest of those are related to what we just discussed. Goal six is air, water, and land resources quality. It's really about the quality of those specific resources. The first two strategies are really just word, rewording. The third one, again, revisits, let's see here, revisits the noise issue, including hours of operations, and new commercial and industrial developments. So we added those words specifically again in response to what we heard from community Goal seven has to do with areas subject to natural hazards, and the strategy 6.1, we specifically added and build upon recent hazard response plans, I think to acknowledge that some work has been done in this area, so that continued, continued work will build upon the work that's been done to date. Goal eight, recreational needs. Policy 1.3 just added public engagement as, for parks and recreation facilities and services, and already talked about marketing and communication, and we added public engagement as well. And then policy 2.1 talked about recreation programs that meet the needs and desires of the Canby community in the city and in the urban growth boundary area, so it just added that clarification. One more on recreational, or actually, two more. Strategy 3.1.3 said, says expand and enhance components and amenities in parks where they are functioning below expectations, so really enhancing and expanding those amenities. And then policy 3.2 was removed, which had said, provide quality athletic facilities to meet the needs of the growing community. I think that's because that sentiment was moved to other, other areas of goal eight, which I will touch on now. Strategy 4.1.2, it's pretty much the same as the one I just mentioned. It's, it moved from a policy to a strategy, there we go. Provide high-quality athletic facilities to meet the needs of the growing community. Identify potential locations for larger community parks to serve the entire community. That's in response to one of the community themes we talked about. Site and open a permanent off-leash dog park, I believe that comes from the parks plan itself. Explore opportunities to provide river access for swimming and other recreational activities, that's in response to community feedback. Create connections to county, regional, and state trail systems, and then specifically the logging road, pedestrian, and bike trail extending that beyond 13th Street. Lots of comments about enhancing the trail network. Moving on to goal nine, economic development. These primarily came, as I mentioned earlier, from the economic, economic opportunities analysis and are modified a bit here. 1.1.2, I think, is really just a rewording. 1.3, support changes in zoning districts to best promote, promote high-wage jobs over the next 20 years, that was an addition. 1.5.1 is some rewording here, but is basically about securing funding for infrastructure improvements to support the expansion of businesses. And 1.7 was just a support expansion and diversity of health services.
What does that mean?
Yeah, I think that was requested by a PAC member, that it's not only expand, you know, the health services available in Canby, but the types of health services that are offered. I mean, you can imagine, I'm not going to try to interpret, but imagine different types of health services, so I think that's what the person was asking for there. Continuing on with goal nine, 2.2.2 is a historic piece again, supporting compatible densification within downtown Canby that strengthens historic development patterns and the connection and coordination between commercial areas on both sides of Highway 99. So again, kind of respecting those historic development patterns. 2.2.4, pursuing funding to support downtown improvements that enhance walkability. We heard a lot of requests for enhanced walkability. The next one, I mentioned facade improvement program. I found out that there is a facade improvement program, so while at one point we had create one, now it talks about continuing and pursuing funding to support that. 2.2.6 talks about, again, supporting the rehabilitation of downtown commercial buildings through available tax credit and grant programs. And 2.2.7, the retention and rehabilitation of historic commercial buildings in downtown Canby. Again, that came from the historic preservation plan. Continuing with economic development, policy 3.6 just changed the term from agritourism to heritage tourism. I think that's a term used in the, in the historic preservation plan. 3.6.2, I remember a specific request to remove the word community partners, or the word community and working with partners. And I see there's a little typo there, 3.6.3 should be on its own line, but that's not a new, yeah, that's not a new one. Evaluate feasibility for a new sports complex. It looks like that was deleted, I apologize for the typo there. It's attached down to 3.6.2. Expanding funding resources and pursuing state grants, just a reword. The next two are historic preservation-related again. We've heard your notes and concerns about those, so we can take another look at that language. All right. Moving on to housing, strategy 3.2, encouraging the development of smaller, more attainable units that provide opportunities for first-time homebuyers. We did hear from some folks about that in the talk of, of increasing densities, that it seemed like it was geared towards maybe multifamily and not enough language about providing, you know, homeownership opportunities. So that's why that one was added. Again, implementing open space requirements around multifamily developments, we've kind of been reinforcing that throughout. Let's see here, supporting changes in residential zoning districts and development standards to accommodate needed housing over the next 20 years. And then this next one, I believe, is another one from the historic preservation plan, having to do with the historic character of, of housing development in regards to mass scale height materials, et cetera. We're getting close. Goal 11, public facilities and services. Work with Canby Public Utility to plan for and acquire water sources sufficient to support population growth. I know that's important to a lot of people. 4.1 is just fixing a typo. Goal 12, transportation. Strategy 3.3 talks about, again, this issue of the tree canopy and street trees, so we added something about including the provision of street trees and buffering from vehicles when talking about transportation facilities. Same with 3.4, increase household access to parks, open spaces, and natural areas, including street tree and tree canopy preservation, preservation. And then the parking issue, talking about transportation facilities being aligned with adjacent land uses and right sizing infrastructure, including parking for all users. Goal 13, only two goals to go, is energy conservation. The first one talks about promoting the use of solar panels to reduce the need for the electrical power reliance from PGE and the Bonnetville Power Administration. The second talks about encouraging a Canby utility rebate and energy conservation programs related to historic resources, long-term retention of buildings and historic character. Again, the, these 1.1.2 and 1.1.3 are both related to historic preservation and that, how that ties into energy conservation. And finally, goal 14, urbanization. We just added in terms, there was a policy about coordinating with different agencies around growth, and a few were listed, but we wanted to add other government and tribal agencies, so that was added. Again, coordinating with tribes around cultural resources. As Don mentioned, there's some state rulemaking about that, so we're aligned with state requirements there. Strategy 1.1.5, working with Clackamas County residents, property owners, and SHPO to evaluate and document agricultural lands within the urban growth boundary. That comes directly out of that historic preservation plan. So thanks for your patience there. There's a lot, and that's just the ones that we've modified since the previous draft. So as I mentioned, there's a lot, there's a lot in, in your packet, and I encourage you to continue to look through those and share thoughts and comments either with us tonight or with Don directly as you have a chance to go through it. Before we get to next steps, maybe we want to pause to see if there's any discussion. I just have a few, one slide left really on next steps, which, well, maybe I'll just do that quickly. So as Don mentioned, I think we have a city council work session coming up towards the end of November. Sorry, I don't, we didn't lock down the exact dates yet unless you have them, Don.
These are, I think these are probably pretty, well, they, well, I think for the end of the year, I think they're pretty solid. I think so. I think that, so we're planning to come back to the planning commission on January 12th. Well, these may float a bit, but that's, we're going to see, we're going to be going to the council on November 19.
For a work session.
For a work session, yeah. And then, so 1/12/26 for the comp plan, that would be the hearing, and they'll, your comments tonight are important in that, in that room, and are appreciated, so we're taking notes on that. Go ahead, Steve.
And do we have a, do we have a hearing date?
Well, February, that, yes, we do. February 9th.
Okay.
For the, for the council.
So November 19th, city council work session. We plan at least now to come back to you for the hearing on January 12th, so you've got several months to kind of look through this material. And we'll be sharing a full comprehensive plan document well in advance of that hearing date, and then city council hearing to follow on February 9th. Thank you very much.
So just a comment or a question or clarification. So if we go through these packets in its entirety on our own, and we have things that maybe we want struck out of there as suggestions, are we just to redline and tab those items as, as we encounter them and then email that to you for consideration?
Yes, yeah. And, and, I mean, if there's comments tonight, just to give us some direction, I mean, iteratively, I mean, obviously, whatever you can tell us tonight, or we've already gotten some of that feedback, boil down, condense, that's what I've heard so far on, on the historic stuff. that feedback, boil down, condense, that's what I've heard so far on the historic stuff, and that's, I think that's appropriate. And if there's other things that you all think are like major items, because that's obviously going to come up for the hearing that you will have for the Planning Commission as well, so we can be ahead of that.
There's so much that I have to take time to digest and make highlights and what have happened.
And this is, you know, that's why we're doing the work session here, and again, doing a bit of delay on the intensive schedule of trying to push this through more quickly. Giving some time is our intent here as well, so that it's not like, this needs to be done right with input, because I mean, obviously, this is, there's a lot to digest here. And if there are questions about, like, what is, these are intended to be, as Steve was saying at the beginning, they're intended to be broad in their nature. So if there is an avenue where the city wants to go in a certain direction, that gives us the opportunity to go there. Doesn't mean we will go there. You know, let's say, for example, a tree ordinance was identified, that would be something that we absolutely could consider. That would have to be caveated if that were to be developed into an ordinance based on the limitations of state law. And those limitations of state law prohibit some of that in residential middle housing areas. So where would that be focused? It would be focused on commercial and industrial areas and that primarily in the city. That doesn't mean that's not a bad idea, but it would have to be tempered with that perspective. So it's not intended to be, like, prescriptive in the sense that these policies are supposed to be broad. The questions that we have for you all is, are there things that we should be adding to that list that provide for that guidance? Ultimately, it's a council-directed document in terms of which of these items are, you know, move forward. Some of them are being part of our, you know, work that we're doing on our comp plan relate to economic opportunity in housing. Those are directed based on policies that came out of housing needs and economic opportunity analysis and parks, master planning. Those clearly have the baseline to them. Others are things that may end up happening. It's more like if we should list things in here that we, I'd like to hear if you think we're missing things, and if there is a better way of saying something, or if you feel like it's not clear what it means, I mean, we can look at that as well.
Yeah, there's, there's actually a lot of that just in the highlights, you know, work to develop, to offer, to, what the hell does that, you know? There's so much of that, that, I mean, my English, my eighth grade English teacher would just scold me for lack of specificity, and so that's where I'm like, okay, I'm trying to understand it in the context, though. This is feedback from the community that they wanted added into these statements, correct?
Yeah, but it's really, ultimately, it's a council directive in the end, and it would be paired to, like, you know, through a process that we, and some of these may require consulting assistance, trust even do them, but yeah.
But, to your earlier point, some of these items have been brought forward, remade them from the 84 plan into current day, and then jizzed up a little bit by whoever had influence on writing them the way they were written. It's not that they necessarily have to be in there, it's just that they were brought forward as a means of addressing.
I think that a lot of these are items that we probably should think about for a 20-year horizon. I mean, like, going back to the tree ordinance, that probably is something we should consider for the city. I would say that, you know, I'm not necessarily advocating for that one way or another, but would that be something we would consider over the next 20 years? I mean, that's an example, and I think that's, that's the level. And again, that's not something that was really even identified in 84, but that came out of the community input that we received. So, and I think that's something that probably should be looked at, I mean, over that horizon. So it's more like, what is the framework here that we want to consider things or not? If they're not in the comp plan, technically, they don't really have the ability as easily to be implemented. Doesn't mean they can, they could still be implemented by council, but that's supposed to be the directive framework for, for the city.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Quick comment. Going back to policy number six, I have a question, something that I would like for you to consider. We've approved a couple of projects in the recent past that have developed into, they've been developed, they've, they've started to work, and we had, we had questions in the approval. We did the best we could as far as sound was concerned, okay? And I'm not too sure that the mitigations that we did, that were put into place are solving the problem, okay? We were afraid there was going to be a sound issue. We went with the best situation that we could, and now we're not, it's not necessarily so good, okay? So I guess my question is, is as a planning commission, when we, when we do something like that, should we put something in, in here? Is there anything that we could put in here or develop in a way that we could go back and say, you know, Mr. Developer, we, we, this is what we decided, this is what you said would work, it's not working. We need you to do more to protect the interest of the neighborhoods around you, because policy six needs to be enforced. Is this, is this something that we could put some teeth into policy number six so that moving forward, we can, we can have something to stand on when we do this? Because this is, this has historically been a situation where, and it doesn't have to do with just sound, has to do with sound, it has to do with light, it has to do with transportation, has to do with a lot of these different things, where we, we come in, we make the, we made the best decision we could make, but then it is, it is a, once, once we're into it for a year, you know, the neighbors are saying, you know, gosh, you guys said this was going to be quiet, or you said it was going to be not intruding on us as far as light is concerned, or you said that there wasn't going to be traffic, and there is, there is traffic, there is light, there is sound. And is there something that we could put into this in the comprehensive plan that would put the, put the developers on notice that would say, you know, guys, moving for, you know, when you come in with a plan, our comprehensive plan says that we don't want these things. We don't, we don't want you to be noisy, we don't want you to be, you know, and granted, when you go through your process, we, we, we say that, you know, you're going to, you're going to put in a certain kind of light, but, you know, and another thing, too, is, is that, you know, sometimes you change owners, you know, and, and the new owner, he comes, an electrical company comes in and says, you know what, we can save you $50,000 a year on your electrical bill if you put in these kind of lights. Well, that's, that's really cool for them. The only problem is, is they light up half a Canby, including, you know, we could turn off all the streetlights, and, and, you know, so.
I think these are all good. I mean, Steve touched on it, and I was going to do a report at the end a bit more on the code update that we are anticipating, but I think commercial and industrial developments have, have the ability to have discretionary elements to them. Part of that is, part of, part of that could be something that we put into the code saying there's a need for, you know, in certain circumstance for monitoring can that happens over time. Now, noise in particular is challenging, and.
Well, it's like saying, you know, it's like, don't build a development next to a dairy farm if you don't want to smell like cow crap, right? Like, so, maybe not that extreme, but I'm just saying somewhere in between, but how do you go back and enforce after the fact? And again, it becomes subjective, you're right. One owner moves out, the next moves in.
What I'm saying is, we could have it in our code, but if our comprehensive plan says this is our goal, because we're talking about goals and policies.
No, we are, and that sets perfectly example of, like, if this is not in here under 3.1, it's going to be much more difficult for us to come back during the code update and say we're going to add that in.
Exactly.
That's the implementation piece, maybe more directive than the abstract kind of discussion.
And that would go with a lot of things, you know, even transportation, you know, when you look at transportation, you know, we, our, our goals and policies say that we don't want to have, you know, trucks and cars all intermingled like we've got now, you know, we want to try to mitigate that as, as best we can. So when we have, we have somebody come in and we say, you know, we need to, our, our goal and policy is, is that we don't want to mix us up so much. We have our code, you know, we said transportation, and then we have our illustrious traffic survey people come in and give us a survey that says everything is, is, you know, the yellow brick road, everything is wonderful, at least we could go back and say, you know what, our, our comprehensive plan says that we don't want traffic to be like this. So I, I just think that there's, our comprehensive plan could be used more as a tool for our planning purposes. You know, I get it that people want things, but it could also help us as planners to develop some of these things. And, and, you know, when somebody comes to us and they say, you know, we want to do this, we can say, okay, cool, that, that's great, you know, our code says this, and our comprehensive plan says, you know, this is what we're striving for. It would help you as a city, as a city planner, to be able to say, you know what, when you go before that city planning commission, they're going to say, our city comprehensive plan says this, and our code says this, and there's probably a good chance that what you're wanting to do isn't going to fly, or it is going to fly.
Yep.
So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Those are.
And I think the comprehensive plan should be a tool we can use here at this, at this, at this level right here.
And that's the kind of commentary that we definitely want, what you're, because it's very specific. I mean, I think that's, that's helpful. I mean, and I know this is a bit like macro concept stuff, but you're right, that would be a good example, like.
If I may, I mean, I think your example is perfect in that, again, the comprehensive plan needs to show the intent. Here's what we want, here's what we don't want. And then, to your well, you know, earned comment about the language and your grammar teacher liking it, I mean, the comp plan shows the intent, the code and the other tools are the how, are the implement, and here's how we're going to do it. Here's our noise standard, here's how we're going to monitor, here's how, here's how we're going to know that you're meeting our specific light, lighting expectations. The comp plan says our desired outcome or our intent, and these other tools say, here's how we're going to, here's how we're going to do it.
Right. That's all I got.
All right, I have a question. I need a legend in this, in the document. There's, there's one section in Goal 12, there's a 2.5, 2.1 on page 47, that is crossed out, green, underlined in pink.
Can I see that, please, Don?
What do the colors mean? Some of them are green, some of them are?
Good question. Let me find it real quick.
Page 47.
Yep, almost there.
I think, yes.
I think I know, but I want to look at the specific.
The page numbers, it's 47.
Is that the top, maybe, Steve?
Yeah.
It's at the top, that, yeah.
I'm not sure why that underline is pink. What I was going to say is additions are probably green, and then if we moved something, it does a different color, maybe that's what the pink is, is it got moved and then, so it shows that it's deleted, but it was moved elsewhere. I'm trying to find another example of that pink color in here.
Are you using Word Editor or using Adobe to make those adjustments?
Word.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
It might also be, sorry, I'm looking at another section that has pink and green, that different people, like, I made some changes based on the community engagement, and then Don was like.
Okay.
I'm going to add a little bit more here. I think that's what it is, is multiple commenters. Thanks for your question.
So that one, that one that's crossed out is crossed out?
That is crossed out, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
My document that I got in the mail, it was over 52 pages long, and what you were reading here was only 40 something pages long, so.
Again, that's why I said, we, tonight for the presentation, we just focused on recent changes. As Don, you know, we don't have time to go through the whole thing tonight, but we've got months to look at this. You'll get another.
I noticed one more page that didn't add up.
Yeah, it didn't add up, I could, I could tell. I apologize for that. We were just trying to find a way to give some focus to tonight's conversation, other than going through every single goal.
Judy has always told me that page numbers are important, so I.
That's good.
Sometimes there's also edits made, like, between when you guys get the packets and then when it's presented, so sometimes if there's like little changes in edits, that's probably why, just because there's been something changed between when you guys receive them and when we, like, have the meeting, if that helps a little bit.
Please, yeah, other comments?
Question. So between now and when we have the hearing on January 12th, is that hearing for adoption of, are we done talking about it?
It's for recommendation by the Planning Commission. So you will be recommending as a body. Now, you can also, and I'm hoping to keep the schedule, but if you guys, like, really wanted more time, et cetera, we could be talking about that as well. This has some flow to it. And it is substantive, this is a large amount of, you know, and back, maybe not to repeat myself, but we would love additional comments here tonight as well as post as well, if you have comments.
So after our comments tonight, if we have comments, we email them in, will we have another opportunity at another meeting when we're all together to discuss?
We could, we could, we could make, we could make that happen. Actually, I'm kind of jumping forward a bit in the agenda here tonight, but we have some availability between now and the end of the year to have more discussion.
Okay.
So if you would all like to have another work session on this, we could do that.
I'd like to note, Don, also that, you know, as time goes on, it's going to turn from this Word document into a formatted, visually attractive with lots of photos, like, it's going to become a polished document over time. Right now, you just kind of have the bare bones.
So I don't know if that makes better sense than you all, like, right, I mean, your preference on, like, sending us comments, or would it be better just to, like, I mean, first of all, I'd like to, if there's something that bothers you or you want to provide comment, it'd be better for us to know that no matter what, even if we have another work session before the end of the year, I'd like to know that, so we're working through this, and so by the time, hopefully, we get to the hearing, generally, we're in agreement, or general, in general agreement would be the hope.
Did we lose Commissioner Driscoll?
She might have.
She's on the phone.
She's still on the phone?
Yes, just on the phone.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Commissioner Driscoll, do you have any comments that you want to add?
No, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jaroche?
Yeah, I think for me, what, sometimes what gives people heartburn, and me too, because I'm a real project management, check the boxes, done, 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 kind of person, and this isn't that. But I, that's always hard for me to wrap my head around, it's, you know, a thousand-foot level, 10,000-foot level, here's what we want to focus on. And when I was the chair of the HLC, that was also hard for me, because, like we mentioned, you know, we want to do facade improvement, and we want to do cemetery, that's all grant work, and that's all managed by volunteers. So if we don't have the volunteers to do it, then it's not going to get done, but that shouldn't give the city a black eye, because, you know, it's just saying, these are lofty goals. Not all of them are lofty, some are lofty, but it's, it's not the kind of thing like we would all traditionally have, a project plan says, well, we didn't do that, so that means it's bad. In fact, I don't think I've ever seen a comprehensive plan scorecard ever, because that's not really the intent, if that helps, you know? So, I don't know. I think a lot of it is about getting things in the heads and hearts of people. So like I mentioned, you know, some of the things in the Heritage Plan, or things like Indigenous, I don't know if you remember with the dog park planning, remember that big dog park discussion that went on and on and on? And there was an item in there that said, well, we need to move forward to that, we have, there's a requirement, just to touch base with the tribal community, to see if they want to survey the property. They probably won't, but it's a requirement, and I think as a city, we want to be in compliance with these things, that's nothing new. But I think people could get, you know, it ruffles feathers, because it feels like a lot, but it's not a lot that we will always get done, it just isn't. A small town, real smallish, so it's not a black eye, because we can't do all these things. smallish. So it's not a black eye because we can't do all these things. It's just saying, this is really what we, you know, where we're headed, right?
Thank you, Judy.
Okay.
Commissioner LeWelling, any comments?
Okay. I'll have one. I'm going to be more high level on some of this. Um, it probably won't make any sense to anybody, but I fought this. I look at these comments from people. Um, you know, we have a real education problem in this town. And I think, when people get on these bodies, council or the planning commission, um, they don't have any education of the past work that's been done. And I, I look at 13th Avenue and for years, I, I've got documentation back, with county was looking at that 50s and 60s to be the major, um, throw through, to connect I-5 and 205 together with 13th. And then over the years, people fight this growth. And so then they allow all these houses along there, schools are along there. Now we can't do it. So I, I look at this and I just, it's the same discussions and I'm seeing these comments. Um, it's neat to do all this, but then you get people coming out of the woodwork when suddenly a, a bell, a red light comes on and starts fighting all this and they get on these bodies. I fought it. That, the industrial park, that was, that should have been a much nicer park, much nicer transportation plan than what it is today because the city fought us. And so I, and that, that's true for the whole town. I mean, I look at our transportation plan from 84. It takes 20 minutes to get from one side to the other, not 30 minutes, unless there's a train and it's longer. I mean, this is insane. So as we do all this and, see, the no growthers should be here now. They should be at this meeting. This is where they should be at. Well, I'll tell you when they're going to come out is when you expand that industrial park and then you have new businesses coming up. And those poor people out there aren't going to know what happened. This is what's going to happen. Let's, there's notice, all these discussions are the same thing that we had in the last 40 years. But at the end of the day, I hear this, well, we want to keep Canby small, that small town feeling. Well, you don't do it by fighting it. You do it by embracing it. And that's what we were trying to do as an industrial park, getting all the owners together and working with the city. That park would have looked so much better if you hadn't have fought us. And the transportation in this city is terrible and it didn't need to be this way. So I, education has got to be not only for the citizens, but it's got to be for the bodies. I mean, I educated many, many city councils to the point where they didn't want to hear from me anymore because they all know better. Um, and, and planning commissioners too. But if you don't know the history of Canby, you're not making good decisions. And so education is important for people that getting on the, down the road, 15 years down the road, getting on these bodies. It's important. And, and I think it needs to come from the city. I said this for years. It needs to come from the city and the city sits out there like they're at this third party. Um, you know, it needs to come from the city. So when people are these no growth peoples come out, it's like, if you want no growth, first of all, there is no such thing as no growth. There's laws in place. That can never happen. And clearly it didn't happen the last 40 years. But you can control your growth, but you got to embrace it, not fight it. So that's, that's what you're going to run into. And that's where, that's when this room will be full. It should be full now. This is where you fight it. So I'm on the record. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner LeWelling. Commissioner McCarthy, any, any final comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Vice Chair, your word.
Commissioner LeWelling, I think, put it very well. Um, you know, we sit, we listen to these things for, for, we, we do these things for a lot. I, I think it was very telling when you started your comments this morning, uh, or this evening, you, you said that, uh, there was basically 51 people that turned in, that went to the summit and, and turned in comments. 51 people out of, they said, I think they said the population of Canby in 2021 was 18,321 people. So I don't know what it is today. Are we 20,000?
19 and change.
19 and change. So 19,000 people, 51 people in the city of Canby decided to come out and get involved. And Craig is right. This room should be full talking about this kind of stuff. This is, this is, this is their town. But here we are, what, three, four, five, six of us talking about our town. So here we are. And I have to say, and I said I wasn't going to say this anymore, but I've been sitting here for a long time and it is, it, it, it doesn't change. So it, but here we are. And if, it is, it is, it is, it's just extremely, extremely interesting to me. What I would request is, I would like a hard copy of, of the packet that you guys sent to us and I will try to mark that up and get that back to you so that we've, we've got, you've got that.
I think, does everybody on the body or planning commission want a hard copy sent to them? I'd take that too.
Okay.
No, thank you. Just Judy, Judy, no.
Okay, Judy, no, but, okay.
I, you want it delivered to you, Judy? Is that what you said?
No.
No, thank you.
Anyway.
I'll take one, please.
So, so there's, there's, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff. This, this is a whole lot of information. Uh, and you guys have all, both said it tonight. The last time that we did this was 40 years ago. And so we are putting together a document that probably, probably, in all reality, will need to last another 40 years. And so there will be some young people sitting here talking about this in 40 years. Not me, okay? But it is going to have to last a long time. And, uh, so it, people need to get involved in this, you know, and I appreciate the 51 people that, that bothered to take their evenings and come out and show up and, and, and do it. But my God, we got, we got to have more than 51 people get out and get involved in this. I don't know if anybody's listening. I don't have a count of how many people are online listening to this, but, you know, it, it's, it's, uh, we got, we got a lot of empty chairs here and the city council has a lot of empty chairs. And, and, uh, this is, this is crucial. You, you can't talk about your dog parks and your parks and your transportation and everything else unless you get involved in this kind of stuff. And, uh, don't come up to me a thriftway and say, well, I can't believe you did this because I'm going to say, well, I didn't see you in that meeting. You know, this is when you had to stand in a thriftway. Isn't the time to talk to me about it. So, um, it's a, you, you give me a hard copy of it, I'll mark it up and, and I'll give you my best, best shot at it and, and we'll, uh, we'll see what we can do. So-
And thank you. And I mean, just going to throw this out here. Would November 24th or December 8th, um, be possible? I mean, if you're, are you interested in having another work session? Those would be one I would think those might work. We're going to give, we're going, we have something for the 24th, for November 24th, which may not be, it's probably not going to take that long. We're going to talk to you all about what items you want for, for the code update that we're going to be, we're going to be starting. So, um, maybe I should not caveat that with, but, but December 8th, I mean, I don't know if, I mean, I'm just kind of throwing dates out here that like, that would give us enough time. I mean, I could do it either way. If you guys want to mark it up and send it back or, do you think it'd be valuable to have another discussion before the hearing or not?
I personally could, I could, I don't care either way. I, I plan to mark mine up and send it in.
That's fine. And then we'll, at least we'll have that as context for the hearing.
Yeah.
But I don't want to exclude that because we, you know, I'm happy to come back and talk more. You know, we could come back, but we'll get the packets out. If that, if that's a consensus, we'll get the packets out. You guys can mark them up. But I'm just throwing that out there that we can come back as well. I don't want this to be like, well, you didn't give me another opportunity to talk. So, so, but the hearing item, again, there's going to be more information added on top of this, which will be the background of the chapter stuff as well, which again is more contextual, but mainly it'll be the policy discussions.
Commissioner Jaroche, do you feel like you need another, uh, work session on this or are you good making comments on your own copy and sending that in to Don?
Yeah, thank you for asking. No, I don't think we need, I don't personally, myself, need another meeting. I would ask that if it's sent out again, that it's sent out in an editable format. Like you said, you know, you did your editing in Word, but it's sent to us in PDF. I have Adobe, so I can do it in Adobe, but maybe I'm the only one that will do it online. I don't know.
Do you guys want-
For me, I want to edit it electronically.
We're going old school and hard copy.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a-
Okay, Judy, we'll, we'll work on getting something editable to you.
Okay, sorry. Thanks.
Commissioner Driscoll?
I wouldn't. Uh, I'd like a copy of the electronic editable version as well, but I do not need another meeting otherwise.
And then do you, uh, feel you need to have another work session on this or is that, will that suffice?
No, I'm a, I think I'm all right. Thank you.
All right. Just the hard copy. I don't think we need another meeting. You'll probably get better.
So I, and so I, and that would be, if I could give you, we'll give you some time, but like, we have some time here. You think two, three weeks? What, what do you guys need? Just so we have a general sense of, I don't want to put pressure on you, but-
Yeah, three weeks.
Three weeks? Okay, yeah.
We can have our term paper due in three weeks.
Okay.
Got a lot of time in the man cave. That's what they have big gulps for.
That's right. Okay, awesome.
Okay, um, so planning director's update then? Do we want to move on to that?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll move into that. Um, just a, a few items just to cover. Speaking of our code update, uh, we did submit for our Department of Land Conservation and Development grant last week. Uh, should be hearing back on that, um, um, hopefully in December. Um, we do have some money set aside already, but this will help us to get the whole code audit piece done. We'll do the code audit first, then we'll do a code update. Um, we will be looking for advisory members for that and I'm going to plug that. Um, again, if you have an interest in that, um, that would probably be starting likely in next, early next year, January-ish, uh, for next year. Uh, we also received word from Department of Land Conservation and Development that we've received another grant that will help pay for urban growth boundary expansion. Uh, we don't have the dollar amount, but, um, we are expecting that it would be the amount we had requested, which is $40,000. Uh, and then we're going to be submitting another DLCD grant, um, this year, this is the third one, uh, for wetland inventory, which is required for urban growth boundary expansion. We'll have to do wetland inventory and we'll be submitting that, um, by middle of November. Um, so that's another one we're submitting for, uh, those three. We are also going to be working with the Department of Transportation on concept planning, which is another grant and the concept planning, back to quick, uh, Commissioner LeWelling's comments on concept planning. Um, we're hoping to get a more robust community involvement at that point. That will be speaking specifically to the urban growth boundary areas and the expansion of those areas and the infrastructure for those areas. Um, that's going to be starting December, January, January and running for about a year and a half. This is a, a process. We're going to be doing concept planning and pre, pre, it, um, it's the pre portion of the work that we do before we, uh, do, uh, comprehensive plan amendment for that area that's brought into the, um, first we initiate the urban growth boundary, um, process. Then we're going to do parallel concept planning and then we will review the comp plan for those areas that are brought in. So there's a bit of, there's a number of steps here, but that process will be starting next year as well. Um, the housing production strategy was approved by city council on October 1st. Um, I did want to point out that, you know, there may not be, you know, complete consensus around this. I know the planning commission had shared some concerns around it. I did want to share that we are, however, much more able to have, I think, direct our own destiny on this. We're not subject to the allocation process that, um, all the other cities are Malala and Canby are the only ones that are not having to do that because we both want to do sequential urban growth boundary processes. And that allows us to continue to do the work based on our housing needs and our housing production strategies until we re-adopt those in 2032 and 2033. So eight years from now. Seven to eight, seven to eight years from now. So, um, that's a bit of a silver lining. I mean, I, I know there's definitely some feelings about the state and how that's all being directed, but at least we, we're not being provided with allocations that give us specific numbers that we have to achieve each year. So, uh, that is something that, um, we're not subject to until the next round in seven to eight years. Um, so I did want to mention that. Uh, and then just upcoming hearings, we do have the Canby Christian Church. I believe that hearing, that'll be our next hearing on October 27th. That's the variance. Hoping you all can please, please participate in that. I think we need a full body here. Commissioner Hutchinson was not feeling well tonight and hope he's available to attend. So that's our next hearing. Uh, we have another item for a memory care facility. I'm not sure where that's going to land. That will be before the end of the year. We have another hearing coming up and you, you all, some of you might have approved the first round of this, uh, for memory care. This is a recast of that same project, um, again. Um, and that's, uh, it's coming back to you all. Um, that's the main hearing item we have. And then-
What's the date on that?
That would be, it's, it's tentative. It might be, it might be December 8th. I'm not sure, Commissioner.
December 8?
I'm not sure if it will be or not. I'm thinking that might be the date. Um, yeah, okay. Um, so that, that's coming up. Uh, I, and I'll, I'll let you know at the next hearing if we have more information on that. But those are the two hearing items we have between now and the end of the year. Um, I think that's, I think that's it. We have, we're going to continue to work with our, our, we have a technical advisory committee meeting coming up for the transportation system plan that we're going to be having in November and, um, continuing to be working with the project advisory team on the transportation system plan as well. So if you have any questions, um-
Just, uh, two, two, two questions. Updates on Knightsbridge reopening and any update on power grid, uh, upgrade?
I don't, I, I don't know about Knightsbridge. I, I don't have the information on when that's going to happen, hopefully soon. Um, the electrical, uh, system process, we're continuing to meet with, uh, and discuss. We had a meeting last with, met last week with PGE representatives. Um, we are doing two things. We are preparing a list of land use approved projects, projects that are in process and projects that have had pre-application meetings in the last three years and, um, identifying those, uh, to work with Canby Utility to say, you know, can all these be served? The one that is still out there is BBC Steel, trying to find a solution for that. They are a larger generator of electrical need, but can the other ones be processed and taken through that, that, that process? The other part of that is we are also mapping out the vacant and partially vacant land for residential, commercial unemployment lands, both in the city and current urban growth boundary, and also looking at potential urban growth boundary expansion areas and coming up with land use mixes and then working with PG&E on what the power generation of that would be, the formulaic ways of converting land use to, um, generation, which would be a long-term solution. Um, I don't know what that looks like and what that is. Um, I, I think we have concerns on both ends. To be honest with you, we have near-term concerns and, I mean, right now it looks like most, I think, of what's in the pipeline, which is this, um, approved pending and pre-app, I think, can be accommodated, but that needs to be confirmed by Canby Utility. And then we need to look beyond that to say, what about the expansion area? And I, you know, can those be served and what does that look like? So we're having to do basically a, um, model of sorts for that. And, um, that came out of the meeting that we had last week. So we're working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And you already covered the next, the, the agenda for the next, um, planning commission meeting on the 27th. So do we want to go to items of interest or guidance from planning?
Um, sure, yeah, and it just-
Do you guys want to?
Yeah.
Would you guys like a quick update on Knightsbridge? I do know about that.
There was no update to offer.
It's supposed-
Oh, Jenny-
Oh, you have an update.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
I have one for you. So as of last week, the plan was that it- So as of last week, the plan was that it was going to open on 15th. So it should be open later this week. They might need to do some flagging periodically to wrap up those ends, but it should be open this week.
Well, that's good news, thank you.
She said it was going to open on the 15th?
Yeah.
Supposedly tomorrow, we'll see.
That's too bad. My neighborhood is so quiet.
With the holidays. With the holidays coming up, is anybody planning on needing to miss between now and end of the year? I, I won't be here for December 8th. I'll be in Wisconsin.
Originally, we were going to be buying for the month of December, but it looks like we are going to stay here local.
All right, so December 8th, you'll have the, uh, you'll run the meeting, okay.
And I'll keep you updated. I mean, some of this has been in float, but that was, I believe there will be a meeting that night, so.
Okay. All right, uh, any other items from planning commissioners?
I, I got a couple of questions.
Mike from?
Thank you. Just why we have you here to remind me of that. Question on this heritage area. I, I, it was mentioned several times in our notes today. It's called the heritage area. How, what is that? How, how big of an area does that cover? Is it the whole state or the whole West Coast or?
And the context, can you help me with that? That's not something we said in our plan, but rather just.
It was mentioned a lot in Goal Five, I think it was.
Regarding the state rules or, um, okay.
I can.
Judy maybe knows.
Yeah, okay.
So there's been a, a goal that to take some part of downtown and have it be a certified heritage area, just like the city hall is a, you know, state certified historic building. There are some cities that create a subset of a downtown area that's historic and make it a historic district. And there's some, there's been some desire to do that. It's unlikely, but that's probably, that's what's probably coming out of the, the, um, the plan is to have a his, a heritage or historic district. And we don't, and that would be really hard.
Okay, I, I, I kind of got the impression that it was talked about and mixed with the tribal thing. And I, I thought it was, it was a thing, so.
Nothing formal.
So I had that. So the other question I have is on 10th Street. Um, I, I walked down that the other day where they're doing the construction and it looks like they're, they're doing sidewalks on one side and not the other side. And it looks like they're doing intermittent. So it looks like they're, they're doing sidewalks on, on one side and then there's no sidewalks and then there's, and you can see where they've got it mapped out to do sidewalk. Are, are we getting sidewalks on a full side on one side or do you know?
I don't, uh, please, yeah, go for it, yeah.
So basically along 10th.
Along 10th Avenue, um, the property owners have to sign over an annexation or a, an easement annexation essentially that if they don't want to give like that five foot into their property, I believe, or however many feet it is, then they just don't get a sidewalk. So basically what Public Works is doing is they're going out and they're asking homeowners, would you like us to build a sidewalk? Would you basically, you know, give us this amount of feet of your property to build it? If they don't agree to that, then they just don't continue sidewalk. They skip over that property.
So we're going to end up with a really big mess on 10th Street is what it's going to be.
So there, I think they, they did get signatures from the majority, a majority of the property owners, but there are a few that did not.
There's a whole bunch that aren't, that aren't there. It's, it's going to be a mess. Oh, wow. How'd we end up doing that?
I, this is something, I'm not sure the history.
Isn't it easement and easement? Doesn't the city easement, how, how does that work?
I mean, this is after the fact and really not necessarily with a development project. And so I can't, I, I wish I could answer that, but it's really a Public Works.
We're going to regret that historically. Um, the other question I've got is, um, actually we already asked it, so I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one thing, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Juroch.
I'm going to talk to Carol Palmer and then maybe this is the action item for the city's communication special. It's kind of goes along with educating. But I think it would be good to have a, a small, I don't know, some kind of document that boils this ocean of the comprehensive plan to give to all of the commissions and committees within Canby because those people talk to a lot of people, whether they're the library, you know, committee or whoever. I was volunteering last, I think it was last month at First Thursday and I was helping out in a booth. And the booth next to us, a lot of people stopped by and were asking questions about growth in the city and making comments about it. And the answers they were given by a nonprofit who's a, a big part of the community, the answers were really wrong and kind of appalling. And I talked to them a little later and I said, you know what? This is not the right, you know, it was, they were just dispersing absolutely inaccurate information just out of ignorance, you know, they just didn't know. So I think that could be an action item for the city's communication specialists to put something, or would you put something together to reach out to these other groups who talk to a lot of people and make sure they kind of understand, you know, where we're headed and why. That might help.
And great point. So First Thursday was the event, Commissioner Juroch, is that correct? Is that?
Yes.
Um, so maybe some sort of like flyer that we could do. I will talk to Jamie Stickell about this.
Yeah, for all the committees and commissions, and I'm going to talk to Carol Palmer specifically about what I experienced at First Thursday because I think she, she'll be all over it. So, um, anyway, no, I didn't want to mention specifically which group it was.
Sure, no, yeah.
And then just to Chair Ellison, if you want to, tonight we can put to bed the August 11th meeting minutes because we have enough people, but that's up to you if you want to do that.
Oh, good call. Commissioner Driscoll, yeah, that was.
I heard Driscoll, yeah.
Okay, uh, so can we go back to that consent item briefly?
Yes.
Uh, draft meeting minutes, August 11th, 2025. I'm sorry. Yes, August, uh, August 25th, 2025. No, continued from that, okay. So draft meeting minutes, August 11th, 2025. Commissioner Juroch, do you approve?
I move to approve the minutes, the minutes of August 11th, 2025 as written.
And do we have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor, uh, which is myself and, uh, Commissioner Driscoll, approved?
Aye.
All right.
Yep.
So we can, uh, the eyes have it, we can adopt meeting minutes, uh, August 11th, 2025 as written.
Thank you.
Nice, Judy.
All right. That's it for me, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, if there's no other items of interest, uh, we will entertain a motion for adjourn. I move that we adjourn the planning commission meeting tonight to close. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? The eyes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.